All right, we have six fifty-nine. We'll let Chair Bosher call it to order right at seven, please.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the City of Westminster Planning Commission. If you wish to speak tonight during the public hearing, please sign up in the back of the room on the table. There's a sign-up sheet. Please do that. At this time, I'd like to call for a roll of commissioners.
Commissioner Zhang.
Present.
Commissioner Mayo.
Here.
Acting Chair Carpenter.
Acting Vice Chair Carpenter is here.
Chair Bosher.
Here.
Commissioner Colling.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
And Commissioner Tomasek.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum tonight, and all members will be voting. And I would like to congratulate Commissioner Zhang for being appointed, moving up from an alternate to a full-fledged member of the commission. Do we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February thirteenth?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
All second.
Thank you. Do we need a roll call on this, or is this voice? Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Okay, we have two items on tonight's agenda. Item three A, a public hearing and recommendation of a preliminary development amendment for the Foster property. And item three B, a public hearing and recommendation of an ODP, official development plan, for Uplands filing three, block two, P A C two. I hereby open the public hearing for item three A, the Foster property. Mr. Kaza, I believe you're handling that.
Yes, Chairperson. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jacob Kaza. I'm a senior planner with the city's planning division. Next slide, please. As a part of bringing this project before you, a staff agenda memo has been created, and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The agenda memo, its attached, its associated attachments, tonight's PowerPoint presentation, the public notices published in the Westminster window, the mail notices and the posted notices are hereby entered into the public record at this time. The notices of the public hearing were mailed to four hundred and fifty-eight property owners' addresses and two HOAs within a thousand feet of the parcel under consideration tonight. The city has also posted the hearing date and time on its website. Next slide, please. Here's a map of the Foster property. The vacant parcels that are the subject of the PDP amendment are outlined in red. The parcels are located at the northeast corner of West one hundred and thirty-sixth Avenue and Huron Street. Next slide, please. The PDP generally aligns the allowed uses with the current twenty forty comprehensive plan designations. The PDP also creates new public use parcels that will be owned by the Business Improvement District. Revised legal descriptions have been included. Additionally, the applicant is requesting the removal of a use restriction that was included on the original PDP. No access points are being changed with this amendment. Next slide, please. Section eleven five fourteen of the Westminster Municipal Code contains ten criteria that are to be considered when reviewing rezonings and preliminary development plans. Staff finds that the preliminary development plan amendment generally meet these criteria as outlined in the agenda memo. Several examples of these criteria are that the PDP is compatible and harmonious with existing public and private development in the surrounding area. Streets, driveways, access points, and turning movements are designed in a safe and convenient manner, and that the PDP will not preclude future public land dedications. For those selected example criteria, staff finds that the PDP is compatible with existing developments in the surrounding area, that the access points are designed in a safe and convenient manner, and that the PDP will not preclude future land dedications. Next slide, please. Staff's recommendation is to hold a public hearing and recommend that City Council approve the PDP amendment. Next slide, please. Staff finds that a recommendation of approval of the applications would meet the city's strategic plan goal of quality of life by facilitating new development and providing for future trail connections and improvements. And the applicant is with us tonight and has a presentation to share with you as well.
Good evening, Chairman.
Hello.
Commissioners. My name is Eric Chekel with Shuck Chapman. We are the developer of the Foster property. So really, this PDP amendment is pretty simple, I believe. Hope you found it the same way. The staff report's very thorough, goes into great detail about the intent of the PDP amendment. We're really here because when we did our original PDP amendment, we knew that the count plan was being updated. So we promised to council and this body that we'd come back and update our PDP to be in accordance with the comprehensive plan. So with that said, I just got a couple, couple slides to share with you. If you could go to slide two, please. So this just shows the previous comprehensive plan, the two thousand and thirteen comprehensive plan. And you can see on this slide, our property is outlined in green. The red is the retail property in the two thousand and thirteen count plan, and then the purple is, was office R and D high intensity. And then with the new count plan, which is the twenty forty count plan to the right-hand side there that was adopted last year, same colors, more or less, the commercial piece is the red piece. And then we've changed the, the purple to a lighter purple because that's an employment flex, which is a new land use within your, within your comprehensive plan. So if you can go to the next slide. Then this just zooms in on the property. Also, I just want to let you know that we have renamed the property Novara, Novara Business District. So it's a new name for the property. If you ever see that, there'll be some signs on the property that, that show that name. So if you ever see that name, that's because that's what we've named it. So I should have mentioned that earlier. My apologies. Anyway, so this slide just zooms in on the property itself. Again, the red is the commercial property at the southwest corner. It's about nineteen acres. And then it shows the employment flex property in purple. Also, what we've done, which has been pretty important in order to make future official development plans a little smoother, is we've also identified these brown public use parcels. And so in putting those into the PDP document, it creates land areas, it'll create tracks for those parcels so that when we do get into the official development plan process, like I said, it makes that process a little bit smoother. So that's, you'll see that in the PDP amendment also, and that's why there's so many pages in the back with so many different legal descriptions that, because we have to describe each of these parcels. And so really, that's it. That's the basics of the document. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer anything you may have.
Any questions from Commissioners for the city or the applicant? Commissioner Colling.
I have just one question. It's really not that important. What is Novara? What does that stand for? What does that mean?
It's a made-up term. It's no, meaning north, Westminster being in northern Denver, and then Vera, meaning new faith. So it's a, it's a northern new faith.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to open the public testimony at this time, but first I need to ask, Jennifer, have we had any voicemails or emails?
We do have one voicemail that was left for us. And Curtis, if you'll go ahead and queue that up for us, please.
My name is Michael Looby. I live at one four two seven zero Navajo Street, Westminster, Colorado, eight zero zero two three. Calling regarding the rezoning plan scheduled to be discussed on February twenty-seventh for the property near the hospital between one hundred and thirty-sixth and one hundred and forty-fourth off of Huron. I have no issues with the Planning Commission's intention to approve the planning rezoning. However, I would just ask that this Planning Commission take into effect that the homes that live adjacent or across from the hospital are bombarded by chain restaurants and chain commercial properties. We would specifically request that the Planning Commission set some sort of limit or requirement on franchises and/or large chain-scale commercial operations. We would like to empower the city to bring more of a home feel and a uniqueness feel to this location versus the rampant growth of chains and franchises. That means avoiding any sort of fast-food chain restaurants, any sort of commercial chain restaurants. We would ask that you specifically require that the planning and approval process specifically allocate that there be some sort of uniqueness to the property. I can't specifically put into words what that means. Maybe for every chain restaurant, there's three that are not chains or something like that. We would specifically just ask that the Planning Commission take this into consideration. Thank you.
All right. At this time, I would like to go ahead and open the public testimony. If you have signed up to speak, there will be a list. Have we got a lot of people signed up?
Nobody has signed up for this hearing, but if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak, feel free to come up to the podium.
If you do come up, please state your name and address, and keep your comments to less than five minutes. Hello, folks. Do either of you wish to speak on the Foster property that is before the commission tonight?
I may have a question after a bit.
Okay. We're about to close the public testimony, so if you would like to speak, please come up. This is concerning the Foster property at one hundred and thirty-sixth and Huron. Okay, thank you. All right, seeing that there is no public testimony, I'm going to close that portion of tonight's hearing and open the application to testimony or questions from the Planning Commission. Commissioner Colling?
Oh, not ready?
Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just from the, what the caller said in that voicemail, obviously, we're a, we, I don't know that we can direct what chain restaurants or non-chain restaurants come in there, but he also mentioned a uniqueness to the property. Is there some sort of uniqueness specified? And I assume there's public, I know there's public art requirements out there and some other things. Can you kind of go into what makes the property unique?
Sure, Commissioner. So I think he was trying to, to suggest that you add a requirement that they make their project unique in some sort of way. We do have in our retail commercial design guidelines requirements for, like, a public plaza that be, that be accessible to people. We do have the public art requirement. Currently, though, our, our internal policy is that we collect cash and lieu, and we don't actually allow pub, we, we prefer to collect cash and lieu, and then we'll use that money to buy a larger art piece on some other city property. There's a couple other ways they could possibly achieve that. That'd be through a unique architectural style or through maybe the pattern of development, rather than being a lot of pads or cart-oriented. They could do some sort of Main Street approach. We are, the, the retail commercial section of this development, they should be submitting their ODP fairly soon to the city. And we have been working with them on some designs for that to make it, I, I wouldn't necessarily say unique. It's trying to fit in with the existing pattern and character of the neighbor of the area. But the Novara Business District has set up architectural requirements, and they are trying to create a concept that is different than a lot of the other existing development. So I would expect that the architecture should be a little bit different than other places in the area.
Great. Thank you. And, and it will, will that ODP come back before us, or will that be administratively approved?
That would be administratively approved. This PDP amendment and the prior PDP amendment and the original PDP have architectural requirements inside of there. So we would enforce what's the architectural requirements inside of that PDP amendment, and then also the retail commercial design guidelines.
Great. Thank you very much.
Now that the public testimony is closed and we have taken questions from the commission, I would like to call for a motion on this item. We will have a chance for discussion afterwards. Commissioner Colling?
I would like to move that the Planning Commission recommended to the City Council approval of the fifth preliminary development plan amendment for the Foster property. This recommendation is based on the findings that the preliminary development plan is supported by the criteria set forth in section eleven dash five dash fourteen of the Westminster Municipal Code.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, any discussion? Seeing none, I will call the question. Do we need a roll call on this? All right.
Commissioner Zhang.
Yes.
Commissioner Zhang is in favor. Commissioner Mayo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayo is in favor. Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter is in favor. Chairperson Bosher?
Yes.
Chairperson Bosher is in favor. Commissioner Colling?
Yes.
Commissioner Colling is in favor. Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn is in favor. Commissioner Tomasek?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomasek is in favor.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask if anyone in the commission needs a restroom or a bio break? Okay, seeing that we don't, I'm going to continue. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing and presentation on the Uplands filing three, block two, P A C two. And it looks like Nathan Lawrence will be our presenting for the city.
Thank you, Chairman Bosher. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Nathan Lawrence, senior planner with the city's planning division. As part of bringing you this project before you tonight, staff agenda memo has been created. Tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The agenda memo and its associated attachments, tonight's PowerPoint presentation, the public notices have been published in the Westminster window. The mail notices and posted notices are hereby entered into the public record at this time. The notices of the public hearing were mailed to property owners and tenants within a thousand feet of the parcel under consideration tonight. Eight, eight public notification signs were posted on the subject property. The city has also posted the hearing date and time on its website. Sorry, two slides forward. Thank you. Here's a map of the overlook at the Uplands property. The project site is located east of the intersection of Clay Street and Eighty-seventh Place. The boundary in red is the overall thirty-acre ODP, of which about ten acres would be developed under this proposal. It's the area that's highlighted in a, in a sort of peach color. The remainder of the site would have street and sidewalk improvements approved as part of this ODP. Outlet A, which is unfortunately not identified in green, I guess that got dropped off. But basically, just to the west of the overlook of Uplands project site, north of the Prospector's Point condo project is slated to be a future park. That, that accounts for a portion of the required PLD or, or public land dedication for the overall Uplands development. Next slide, please. And it's better seen here in the center is Outlet A, or the center top. The ODP aligns with the, aligns the allowed uses of the current twenty forty comprehensive plan designation of suburban multifamily with two hundred and forty-seven units as allowed by the Uplands Preliminary Development Plan. These units are spread over seven three-story buildings that are centered around an amenity area. Access to the site would be from two entrances off Clay Street and a wide multi-use trail abuts the north side of the site as well as the west side of the site along Clay Street and its expansion. A large detention facility is located in the northeast corner of the site and would provide stormwater management for, for the entirety of the larger thirty-acre site. Next slide, please. Section eleven five fifteen of the Westminster Municipal Code contains seventeen criteria that are to be considered when reviewing official development plans. Staff finds that the official development plan generally meets these criteria as, as outlined in the agenda, agenda memo. Next slide, please. Staff recommends that, that the Planning Commission hold a public hearing and recommend that, that City Council approve the ODP amendment. And, next slide, please. Staff finds that a recommendation of approval of the applications would meet the city's strategic plan priority of shared sense of community through the creation of new affordable housing that would allow for a diversity of residents to call Westminster home. The applications would also meet the planned priority of quality of life by facilitating the construction of new housing that offers residents access to park space, trails, and other amenities. The applicant team is with us tonight and has a presentation to share with you as well. Thank you for your attention. There are several staff members here tonight. They'll be happy to answer any, any questions. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Are we okay to go, get started?
Yes.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Marcus Pockner. I am here, I'm a land use and community outreach consultant for the Uplands team and to St. Charles Town Company. We always appreciate the opportunity to present to this Planning Commission, but I have to say particularly honored tonight to present the first affordable housing development in the Uplands community, and very excited to walk through the site plan on Area C two. Next slide. This is the team that is here today. Again, Marcus Pockner. I'm joined by Jordan Zalinski, who you'll hear from in just a moment, with St. Charles Town Company, the developer of this site. We also have a team of experts. Terry is here from K D G Y, and Daniel is here as our engineer. So we stand ready to answer any questions or comments that you may have. Next slide. I'm going to turn it over to Jordan just to tell a little bit about St. Charles Town Company to provide a little introduction himself. He is a principal and director of development for St. Charles. Jordan?
Good evening, Chairperson and Commissioners. Thank you for having us. Excited to tell you about, as Marcus said, the, the first residential multifamily affordable community to be developed as part of the Uplands requirements. St. Charles Town Company is a now thirty-one-year-old company, originally founded in Denver. This will be our second multifamily residential development in Westminster. We have a habit of doing business in the communities in which we're already present. So we have a long history in Denver, Lakewood, and now Westminster. We, you know, I, I heard something unique in the, the last presentation about non-chain-oriented retail and that kind of thing. As a company, we sort of pride ourselves on doing exactly that. We have a lot of small, small business, mom-and-pop shops that, that reside in some of our, our properties around town. And like those mom-and-pop shops, we're proud to provide housing for the employees that work at them. Next slide, please. You'll see some pictures of four of the communities that we've developed in the recent past. The top left is St. Mark Village. That's located at Ninety-seventh and Federal in Westminster. To the right of that, that project's name is Los Altos de Alameda. That is in the Westwood neighborhood of Denver. Below that, you'll see a project named Del Corazon from the heart. That is also in the Westwood community of Denver. And to the left of that, the bottom-left corner, that is Askren Park, now renamed Pascal Gardens. And that is at approximately Alameda and I twenty-five in the southwest Denver neighborhood of Athmar Park. Next slide, please. As a, and actually, go back one slide, please. You'll notice that nothing looks cookie cutter in there. Every project is unique. It's local to the community in which it sits, and it takes design cues from whatever happens to be around it, the history of a site, the history of a neighborhood. That's, that's very important to us, and we take it very seriously. And Terry with K T G Y can probably speak to that in a little bit. Thank you for your time.
Terrific. Next slide, please. Folks, I'll be diligent in working through our slides. We always provide a little background on the overall Uplands development. This is our agenda, to walk through the vicinity map, to give an overall Uplands update, and then really focus on the C two neighborhood and talk about what's involved in the site plan, and then any specific exceptions that we are requesting for this community. Again, we have our experts here, so please ask any questions that you have. We have that team available. Next slide. It's interesting to note the site that we are on, it has the star on it today. You think of C two, you think of Eighty-eighth and Federal, and the Fraternal Order of Eagles on that northeast corner there. Thinking of this site, really making a pretty stark transition across Federal and creating some infrastructure that doesn't exist today, the extension of Eighty-eighth and really connecting to this site. Next slide. This is the overall Uplands update. I know we were here a few weeks ago on one of these parcels, so I'll just kind of cover this in general. I do want to show, we're always showing the infrastructure improvements that are part of the master infrastructure plan. So you see that in red, green, and blue. Those are utilities that are being pulled in to the primary site, which is parcel A. You can see that denoted with all the As on there, the larger parcel. So the water lines, the utilities, and stormwater improvements that are happening. The dark orange, including A four, which was before this commission, earlier this month, you see that dark orange and this site, C two, and a couple other sites. Those are going through this process right now, through, through Planning Commission, then to City Council. The purple is in the new city review process, so we went first to concept review, and then we'll go through the formal process. And then that light orange, as you see in A three and the D neighborhoods, that's just beginning the planning process as we work through it. We do show the two neighborhoods that have been approved. You see the site plans there. You'll note one of those, A two, then B one, and now the neighborhood is C. We're really proud to have a neighborhood in each one of the larger parcels, really showing the diversity and how important it is to pull and build the infrastructure and really transition this to the existing neighborhoods. Next slide. This is a slide we show. It is from the original PDP that was approved by this body and City Council in two thousand and twenty-one. It shows the public land dedication. Thank you, Nathan, for the thorough staff report. He mentioned the three-acre site there in parcel C. That is a very important link of open space. the three acre site there in Parcel C. That is a very important link of open space, a public park that will be dedicated there. Of course, then transitioning, if you will, to the north to Camanish Park and the Highland Hills and the remarkable rec center, or the recreation facilities there. Really a key component of making that connection and also providing parkland on the east side of Federal. Next slide. This shows, I'm just going to focus again on that northeast quadrant a little bit. You see all the infrastructure. We've talked a lot about the other neighborhoods, but if you start at 88th and Federal and those dash lines on that intersection, restriping all of those, adding new crosswalks on all four sides and restriping. So really creating that extending 88th to the east. The green line shows a striped bike path that's being added. So to see that amenity actually connecting to that bike trail just down the hill. And then the red is a 10-foot multi-use trail. So just think of that trail and then the burgundy is actually an off-site trail connection. So truly bringing connections and open space connections that don't exist today and really allowing a true pedestrian environment to flourish against that open space. Next slide. This frames it. This is the neighborhoods. I won't spend any time here. This is the A2 neighborhood that has also been approved already. 135 homes. The next slide shows B1, which is again off of Bradburn. If you transition to that next slide, it shows a little bit of that development there, the 82 homes. And then next slide, transitioning to this site plan, again in the C neighborhood. So we'll make this transition, thinking about this, that was provided as a background. Now to really go site plan specific to what is before you tonight. Very proud of this site. As Jordan went through, St. Charles Town Company is a very well-known, unique planner that really looks at the land and lets the land plan itself, the development. This tells a lot about it. 13.77 acres, but that includes that three acre PLD, right? So this is just about a 10 acre site on the east side of Clay there to really look at that. Seven buildings, 247 units are being proposed in these seven buildings. All are affordable units at or below 80% AMI. And I'll speak about that in just a moment. You do see the breakup or the mix of the one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and really proud to get 16% of three bedroom units into this as well. We meet requirements for the parking. You see the amenity zones, which we'll certainly talk about on this site, but really bringing internal amenities to this site as well, as well as making those vital connections to all the existing open space that surrounds the site, particularly off of Clay Street and the extension of 88th. Next slide. This does talk a little bit about this site. Again, just kind of looking at what it is. It's previously, this has never been developed. This has been ag land. So this was approved for multifamily, the use that we're proposing in the same density that we're proposing. We are being completely consistent with that plan. And again, including that three acre parkland that is just open land today, right? There's not really infrastructure that surrounds that. That will be an addition park and really make that extension all the way up to 88th. Next slide. This is something we always call our compliance snapshot. It shows what was approved in the PDP in 2021. That's the PDP column and then what we're providing. I think important to note, we are in the higher end of the density, right, that was prescribed for this area at 247 units. We think it's absolutely responsible to bring housing typology and diversity and affordable housing to this, but we're also providing more publicly accessible private parks than was planned. We think that's the right balance and finding that. I will note one building setback that we are deviating on, on Clay Street, that is actually intentional to really break up the massing and the design of that. Most full focus on that. To really have a better articulation of design along Clay Street. Please note, particularly for neighbors that may be here, the building height allows up to 65 feet. We think that was too tall. We wanted to provide a better transition and we are maxing out at 41.8 feet, three stories. Next slide. This has a lot on this chart, but I just want to kind of point out a few things. The first, again, that mix of one, twos, and three bedrooms, right? That is something that we talk a lot more about in affordable housing development, to think about inclusive planning, but also reflective of the neighbors that are going to live there. But probably what's most important is the next column that shows the 40, 50, 60, and 70%. That are the AMI, those are the AMI levels that we will be providing on this site. And if you follow that over to an occupational chart on the right-hand side there, it shows those different AMI levels and who those folks are, who that is in our community, the vital members of our community. You see teachers, you see police officers, you see salespeople, you see all of kind of the bread and butter of our community and the different cross-sections and the incomes that they make. We are providing housing for all of those occupations and at these cross-points. We have spoken a long time in Uplands about providing a diversity of housing and we're really able to deliver, again, 247 units focused on these particular AMI levels. Next slide. This shows again just that critical need to the city in our PDP. We specifically, that's the larger Uplands PDP. We had a requirement of 300 units of affordable housing. This is 247 of those. We have a number of other things that we're working on, but again, kind of the anchor of this site. I will also say from an amenity zone in connection to open space, we are really proud of how this connects and the amenities that will be provided to this community as well. Next slide. I'm going to talk just briefly. I'm not an architect. I won't do nearly as well as Terry would describing this, but I want to show you a couple of renderings because I think it's really important to think about this site. This is looking east if you're on the eastern edge of the clubhouse, that internal amenity, looking at that crescent-shaped building. We will go through a few of the exceptions that we are asking for, but one thing you can see is we're really trying to break up both the horizontal and the vertical massing that happens in these buildings. We're using things like the Dutch gable, other design elements to really break the roofline to provide more articulation and step down on the southern end there to a two-story product. You also see just a lot of articulation on the horizontal plan with balconies. We are providing 100% balconies on this. Yes, smaller than normal, but 100% to really provide that interest and amenity zone for the residents themselves. Next slide. This is looking at our southern entrance along Clay Street. I wanted to show, as you think of the Prospect Point, the folks at Prospector Point, the condos just to the west of this site, showing the really ample setback there along Clay, almost a double row of landscaping there to really provide a good buffer, but it shows kind of that three-story blending in, mirroring the size of the existing condos that are across the street and providing significant buffering transitioning along Clay Street. So again, really showing, you can see the Dutch gable here, the architectural elements kind of blending in and breaking up the mass of the buildings. Next slide, I believe, yes, this is looking northwest, showing as you look down kind of that drive aisle there, the tuck-under garages that we're proposing here. You see some of the detail that's involved in those. And also the greenways, two very significant greenways between the buildings, a real rare quality and kind of a multifamily to see true greenways making the transition to the clubhouse and throughout. Very focused on kind of the natural zerscape, but also certainly very immense kind of landscaping to enhance the landscaping and transition from the area. Next slide. Finally, this is looking west. You see the PLD, or PLD land, excuse me, to the west. You can see it kind of in the background. This shows one of those greenways again and shows a different stone palette and color that we're showing, doing three, three different building forms, a couple of color palettes to really provide, again, that mix of architecture, miss of massing and provide a lot of architectural detail in the site plan. Next slide. Neighborhood amenities. If we transition to this slide, it again just shows how this sits in the area. Important to think about again, Clay does not go all the way to 88th Street today, right? So that opportunity to re-nit, to bring this into the fabric and make that connection to Highland Hills and Camanish Park. Thinking about Clay Street, if we want to start maybe on the top and just look at that, not only are we doing a 10, a 10-foot mixed-use, multi-use trail along 88th, we're also doing that internal to make that connection up to 88th. So really could have the pedestrian, the bicycle, multiple mixed-use on that or, or multi-use on that trail to make that connection. We're also doing that on Clay Street. So really providing ample trail connections there. As you go around, you see the sports court and the playground facilities, the barbecue court, all of those things in the amenity zone or at the end of buildings, providing really a mixed and highly amenitized environment for the 247 units that are on site. Showing the image on Clay Street, again, showing kind of the double row of landscaping there, the trees making kind of a grand promenade on Clay Street. I will say Clay Street is five feet wider from a right-of-way perspective than other streets are, and that allows for that 10-use, 10-foot multi-use trail. So really, again, providing great pedestrian connections. As we move to the north, you see two of those greenways as well. Again, really putting that connection, that natural connection over to the PLD that will be just west of that area. Next slide. The exceptions, I am going to detail. This is very consistent with Uplands. We always looked at the PUD and in, in the PUD, we're very specific about looking for ways to reflect kind of maximum design flexibility, to look at ways to utilize the site and the way the site laid out to really take advantage of those features and enhance the opportunities to blend into the community. So a lot of the exceptions on our site, transitioning perimeter exceptions, not having those who are more comfortable in all of our edges. Next slide. This shows actually the, the list in the ODP. We asked for eight exceptions. I know nobody can read these. I just want to show that we've had these detailed, went through them in great detail with staff over the last number of months, went back and forth on how to determine and how to approach each one of these exceptions. The next slide gives us a little bit of a basis to describe these. So I'm going to very briefly go through the eight that we are asking for. We think it's always appropriate to share these. The retaining wall height, this is on the detention basin. We are asking for six-foot walls instead of four-foot walls. There is really substantial grade change in the northeast corner of this site, about a 20-foot grade change that we have to make up. So this allows us to appropriately size the detention basin and also provide for density and transition and open space. So we are asking for that. Again, it's really just the existing topography and building into that existing topography. The next one, the building setback along Clay Street. This was intentional. We had, generally, we average about 30-foot building setbacks. So this is obviously on the east side of Clay Street, transitioning to the condos. But what we noticed, if you put all of those buildings in the same line, it really created too much of just the same pattern. We wanted to see that breakup of the facades and the walking and the pedestrian. So we moved a couple of the buildings, 2B and 3D, in to reduce setback, to really provide articulation in a pedestrian format along that street. The entrance medians, those honestly coincide with some water mains as we enter our site. You know there are limitations on landscaping above those water mains, so we have found other ways to landscape and really celebrate the entrances. They're just a little off-site because of the location of those particular water mains. The garage sizing, to be very particular, we are reducing the garage size from 12 feet to 10 feet and 11 inches. That is actually the same size that we build in most market rate and affordable product. We think these work very well, but it is a reduction from the standards that are in the code today. Balcony sizes, I think this is one of those that is just so beneficial to the site. Yes, we are asking for a reduction in minimum size, but that reduction in the code is for 50% of the balconies. If you have them across 50%, we are going to have them on 100% of the units. So smaller, but on every unit. We think that's a terrific, a terrific addition. Building heights, this is again about the step downs, right? And really the way we're using architectural features, the dormers, the Dutch gable, all of those elements that you saw to break up that massing, that height. Again, we are only using 65% of the allowable height on this. So we're not asking for a waiver to build higher. We're actually substantially below the building height that's allowed on this site. The 88th Avenue right-of-way, I want to be sure and note this, we are not putting trees or shrubs there because of, that's above a forest main. So again, specific limitation that's there today. As you know, that 88th is not, is not built there today, right? So we're building that. So we are providing the same number of trees. It's just south of the traditional area where we'd see them in a tree lawn. So on our landscaping, we'll still have that tree frontage and the landscaping associated with that. Last one is just a simple note. We are exceeding the private parks for public use. What we are not doing is doing that on the clubhouse and the pool. Those are amenities that are specific for this apartment community. So that approves, that public access applies to all of the surrounding, the perimeter parks, but not to the pool facility itself. Next slide. I think that's transitioning to standards for approval. Nathan, as always, and staff has done a great job. I will just point out number four here, kind of looking at, you know, all the ways that we work with the standard code, but then go through these exceptions to, we think, really enhance the environment for our residents and for the sounding, or surrounding communities. And then also just the incredible opportunity here to really bring connections to the open space. More open space here in Federal Heights and just to the east, the Highland Hills amenity. And we have designed so much of this to take everyone to the north and have those open space connections. I think with that, again, we have our whole team here. Thank you as always for your patience and trying to go through the detail of that presentation. And we are here to answer any questions or comments you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I have a quick question. Are these going to be resident-owned or are these rentals?
These are rentals. There is a management office on site.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the Commissioner? Commissioner calling?
I'll start. Thank you for your presentation. I always enjoy your very thorough. Can you go back to the exceptions for me?
Absolutely. I say that if somebody else does it, but yes.
So the first one, a six-foot retaining wall. Is that a full drop or are you stepping that?
That is a fine question. I'm going to have our engineer address that if that's okay.
Thank you.
Hi, Dan Katz with Kage Civil. So there's actually going to be three tiers, two six-foot walls and then a two-and-a-half. And that's to avoid having a, you know, an 18-foot tall wall that we don't believe that would, one for maintenance reasons, two for aesthetics and whatnot. We were trying to keep that max height down.
So you said two six-foot and then a two-foot in between?
Yeah, two-and-a-half at the bottom. So two-and-a-half, six, and six.
So six is, you know, larger than what's allowed. And there's a reason for that. It's a safety reason. And what are you doing to make that so that kids don't fall off that?
Sure, so along the, the top tier, the one that would be up along the parking and the drive aisle, there's going to be safety railing along the entire perimeter of that.
Safety railing? Okay. And that's just for detention? That's why you're making it so steep? So you can get the maximum amount of detention?
Correct. Yeah, there's, there's roughly, I want to say 15 to 20 feet of fall across the pond. And ponds do have to be flat to make use of the storage. If there's, if they're sloping across the bottom, there's max storage depths and it can't be utilized if there's sloping across the bottom with that significance.
Okay. I'm still, that six foot's a huge drop. That's still a lot for kids, even with the rail. Typically, you would try to like step those three foot each or something like that, 40, 40 inches? What's the maximum wall height in Westminster? What is the maximum wall height?
Four feet.
Four feet? So I mean, four foot would have been better. And there's no way you could fit that in there, huh?
Correct. And, and we had talked, kind of went through a couple of options. One of it would have been reducing the distance between the tiers, but we didn't want to ask for that exception. So we're meeting the, the seven-foot distance from wall to wall for the tiers. That way, we also believe that's a safety, safety factor too.
Sure.
If you make them too steep to each other.
Too narrow, yeah.
Exactly. So we opted to go with the slightly higher walls with the, while meeting the separation.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, of course.
My next question is about the building setback on Clay Street. You talked about it here, and I, I agree, having diversity of setbacks along Clay is important. Can you be more specific? Did I see 14.5 feet for some of those buildings?
That is correct. I think it's 14.5 or 14.9. It's the two buildings.
Can we go to a site plan so he can point to where that is? That would be great. I would understand this a little bit better.
No problem. Right there, you can see it. It's maybe one above. It's actually, if you started at the top, right, it's building one. It's buildings two and three, if I remember correctly, that have kind of a zigzag that come a little closer. So we average about a 30-foot setback, but those two buildings are just under 15 feet from the setback from Clay Street.
So you're saying the second and third building?
Yes, I'm confirming that that is correct.
They look exactly in line. The first, second, third, and fourth building all look very similar to me.
Yeah, that's probably just, and I apologize. I think, thank you, John, is showing the layout in the PDP, but you see kind of the zig and zag of that street.
So it's really just two buildings?
Yeah. It is. And I, and those, the rest of them though are, you know, significantly setback at that 30 feet. I think we did that again intentionally to break up that massing, that similar plane along Clay Street.
Are those first four buildings, one, two, three, and four, also stepped down architecturally on the end to a lower height?
I will ask Terry maybe to see if each one of those steps down. We do try to break that massing, right, particularly as you saw some of the images. You can see the building here that left lower image there. That doesn't have that step down there, but trying to break it up with other architectural features. Go ahead Terry.
Good evening. Terry Willis with KDGY. The answer is no. It doesn't step back down a full story, but we did break up the roofline with the Dutch gable so that it, it appears smaller and, you know, less massive.
So all four of those have the Dutch gable on the end?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. You mentioned something about an entrance median and landscaping not being, was it eliminated? Is that it? That there's no median at all?
No, there's some, and I may have to defer here a little bit to the city. This is something that we've worked for. Of course, the entrance median or the exception on that, the entrance medians, is something that is very particular in the code about signage and the way we kind of celebrate those entrances. We are, believe, we believe we're achieving that the same way, just with different architectural. Those particular signs happen to be over some water main issues. We have some issues we can't build right above that. So, we're going through some landscaping to do that differently. Part of that is that celebration where we showed the two layers of trees there on Clay Street to show other ways where we have that kind of architectural entrance to the site. And these are also interior to the edges, right? This is that southern entrance there and below, between buildings one and two, really looking at that. So, finding other ways to provide that landscaping with the limitations of the utility.
And so, it's basically eliminating the medians is what we're doing, right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, I just make sure I understood that. Okay. And you went pretty fast on the garages. You said they were smaller. How much smaller are they?
Yeah, so, the standard is 12 feet by 20 feet is the standard. We are requesting 10 feet and 11 inches by 20 feet. So, it's a reduction of 13 inches, and that is a standard that we certainly are seeing utilized in both market rate and affordable housing product.
Okay. And it looks like building one, two, and four, if we're counting from the top?
Sure.
Have garages. Building three is kind of, I don't know if landlock is the right term. There's no garages on those. Those are back-to-back units. Where do those guys park?
Sure. We'll be happy, and I call it greenlocked because we're surrounded on both sides with the greenways. But we'll talk about the parking for that site maybe on that.
So, there's actually five buildings that have tuck-on or parking. The big Crescent building on the east, to the right, has surface parking, and then the building that you call out, the third one down from the top, is flanked on both sides by courtyards. So, obviously, there's no immediately available parking in front of a unit. There is parking along the east edge of those three buildings that you see there, and then also to the south of it and further off to the east.
Is parking allowed along Clay Street, on-street parking?
On-street parking is allowed on Clay Street. It's not counted in the parking.
Right, counts.
Counts that you see on the ODP.
I mean, just knowing how apartments live, I mean, that's a little hard for people in those units not to be able to have more direct access to parking spaces.
One of the changes we went through with staff was actually allocating parking from elsewhere on the site, notably on the west side of the detention pond, over to the east side adjacent to that building. So, we did, staff did bring that concern up as well, and this is the result of the change in the site plan accordingly.
It just seems like those units are really short of parking anywhere nearby. So, I would think that's not ideal. That's all I'm saying. I would prefer to see them have something a little bit closer. Okay, so, that's just an opinion, but if staff's already worked through that and they feel comfortable with that. Is there anything you want to add, Nathan, on that parking wise? You guys feel comfortable with that?
It was a comment that was raised by staff, is all I can say.
I still think it's a concern.
Yeah, we would just balance it. We intentionally really looked at that PLD just to the west of this site and thought that was a pretty remarkable amenity to have that greenway.
Oh, it is, yes.
You are absolutely right. But looking at the mix of units and the other buildings, to have really kind of a diversity of product even amongst the seven buildings, we thought that was important. So, we understand it, agree, and not fighting that, but I think that happens a lot in these kind of buildings that have a little bit more of an interesting shape.
Yeah. The last question I will bug you about is, you talked about 100% of the units would have balconies, but they're smaller.
Yes.
What's the size of those?
Sure. I'm going to have Terry or Jordan give you the dimensions of that. That's, again, just smaller than the code. Sorry, Terry, to go through that, or maybe staff has to answer that reduction.
Great question. They're actually not as small as you might think. They're generally nine feet by six feet. Some of them do vary. Some of them are larger, some of them are slightly smaller, but generally, they're nine feet by six feet.
It's pretty small.
They used to be nine by five. Staff made a comment about sizes, and can we look at maybe increasing those sizes? And what we ended up doing was, I think, a benefit both to the size of the balcony and the aesthetics of the building, we projected the balconies out one foot on floors two and three, so it adds a little bit of additional interest on the architecture as well.
Okay, I mean, it's nice they all have balconies. I think that's a plus.
It is.
I wish they were a little bit bigger, but I understand. And then, the last question I'm going to ask about is the, and this may not be something that you have control over as the developer, because it's more of a management company thing. There is a rec center. It's got inside workout or something, some kind of inside workout area. So, I know someone that lives at St. Mark's Village, and their workout area is only open when the sales office is open. So, it's only open from like 10:00 in the morning to about 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock at night, never open on weekends. And I think that's kind of selling it short. So, if there's a way to make it so that those kinds of, I don't know if you have control over that kind of thing, I think it's just really disappointing for people that live in those facilities. And they buy in, the sales staff sell them that, you know, you rent here, we've got this great workout room. Nobody's ever able to use it, so it's disappointing, so.
And Commissioner, that's on the amenity zone, right? The clubhouse and the pool. Yeah, great, noted, and thank you for passing that comment along.
There's probably nothing you can do about that, right?
Well, I mean, we're building it and going through that and kind of work to establish the management, so we appreciate that comment, and we'll certainly look at ways we can try to extend that.
Thank you for your time.
Any other questions? Commissioner Tomacek?
Yeah. Everybody else seemed to cover my other basic questions, but I do have one, and this is possibly a little nitpicky one. But you've got, it appears, one or two accessible units in every one of the buildings. I would encourage you to look at the ones on building D, that style, that translates over to building three. They all end up on the Clay Street side, and there's no garages. It's going to be difficult for those people to get moving back and forth, maybe rethink laying those out.
Okay, terrific. We'll pass that on, I think noted, and your connection, you're right, from a vehicular connection point is what you're saying, right?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions for either the city or the applicant, I'm going to open the public testimony part of the hearing, and if you signed up on the sign-up sheet in the back of the room, Jennifer will call your name in the order in which you signed up. And Jennifer, before I go there, do we have any voicemails or emails that need to be added to the record?
No voicemails, no emails. I do have the sign-up sheet. If you're ready, I'll go ahead and call them up.
I think we are ready to go ahead and open the public testimony.
Okay.
Please keep your comments to less than five minutes and state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Jim Fenimore is first. Jim and I are old friends. We talked yesterday.
Good evening, Chair, Council, Commission, staff, developers. I want to thank you guys for opening this up to where we can have a comment. Most of my comments are about safety issues. First thing is, I would like to say that the elevation with the stone is very attractive for the community. It looked really good on that design there. Next question would be, that three-acre park, who develops it? Is it the developer or is it going to be the city? Then also, the garages, we're coming, they're getting all these electric cars. What's the fire marshal say about that? Because, you know, people are going to be putting their electric cars in there, and there are a lot of electric cars catching on fire. The holding pond looks like it's, you know, the, you know, the big safety there is nobody trapping water and any kids getting hurt on that. Then, the fence that's on the, on the property, there's a mobile home park on the east side of the development. Is there going to be some kind of a fence, privacy fence put up there to separate the new development from the old trailer park that was built, I believe, in 1960? Something that needs to be considered by the police department and the city is, when you've got low-income housing, it draws crime, or additional crime in. So, just for example, the city of Federal Heights has a high crime problem. They're rated fifth in the state, which is very bad with crime. So, basically, that high crime is from 90th Avenue south to 88th, or I mean to 84th, excuse me. So, we need to look at that. Big, big concern for the safety for the development is 88th and Federal is a very dangerous intersection. You've got the Eagle sitting right there on that corner, and it's setbacks. There's not much setback there. And unfortunately, I don't know what can be done about that, but I would say that I haven't seen any plans as far as, I feel like 88th should be taken all the way across to Zuni and develop that. There is water lines in the ground, there's our fires plugs there, there's also sewer going through there, so there's development in there, but they've been done years ago. So, that would probably need to be upgraded. So, my big concern is, is connecting 88th all the way from Federal over to Zuni to where we give that extra access, because this development is bringing a lot of people into the corridor between 88th and 84th Lowell to Zuni. So, we need to lower that impact on traffic there. Also, the reason for developing 88th to Zuni would be for fire access and emergency vehicles to get in and out of those communities easier and lower their response time. And then, let's see. I think that's my big concerns, is, you know, I don't know. Oh, the last thing is, is the pedestrian, I spoke before about putting a pedestrian crossover at 88th and Federal, because you do have the Highland Hills Park to the east there. And so, all the people that are in the, between the Lowell and Federal are going to be using that, and I don't want to see any people or kids getting injured or killed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is Art. I'm so sorry, I can't read this last name if you don't mind coming up. Thank you.
Art Dubu.
Dubu, that's what I said, right?
No, it's Arthur Dubu. It's French. Name is Art, or Arthur Dubu, and 20 years of volunteer firefighter. So, I have a perspective that's a little different. And also, licensed aircraft mechanic. Jim and I are troubleshooters. We're not complainers. We see problems. We come up with answers, possibly. If we don't have the answers, then maybe your suggestions, I should say, then we try and get people involved that are. The tie-in between 88th and Zuni, he and I both agree on that. I think that would be a big access. The question about a wall, some type of a fence between the complex on the east side and that mobile home park needs to be considered very strongly. From a, one of the things I cringe on balconies in apartment complexes, people bring in their barbecue grills, and that's a fire hazard. And I think, I don't know if these apartments are going to be sprinkled. They are, that's definitely a consideration over that balcony, because that has been a problem nationwide in the past. Barbecue grills on the balconies get carried away. People don't always pay attention to them. And so, those are some safety concerns. Basically, Jim has covered a lot of the ideas, like I said, he and I are, we like to solve problems when we see something, and I've done that in the past. I mean, that's my background. Just as a note, I was a mechanic of the year, State of Oklahoma, by the FAA, because of the work I did, being too diligent and paying attention to what was going on. And so, that's where we come from, and we'll be watching this as it develops. One thing I might add, this is maybe out of place here, but Federal Boulevard is going to be picking up a lot of extra traffic, and those turn lanes going on the 88th southbound has been a problem in the past with that short turn lane backing up into the left-hand straight-through lane. And so, that needs to be taken into consideration there, and that's another reason why we'd like to see a tie-in between 88th and Zuni to help relieve some of that traffic. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. More great comments.
Next is Aaron Vamer, Vomer? Aaron, did we lose you?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, you sure? Okay.
Good evening, Commissioners. John Palmer. Couple of things I'd like you to take into consideration or get clarity on. First off, let's talk about ADA. Will those units on the second, third floor be ADA assessable? As in, will there be elevators, or will this only be ground floor available for ADA? Will the garages all, and not specific, and excuse me, not randomly, but will all of the garages have EV outlets for our, for the potential future use of electric cars? Next, where, I'm assuming families will be living in these units, where will their children be going to school? And please don't say Crown Point Academy, because there's a waiting list already, like five years long to get into there, so let's not even equillate that. In addition to daycare, are there any facilities in the area that are going to be able to handle Next, I think you're putting these people in a low-income neighborhood at a disadvantage, and I say that because they're at the most close proximity to probably three to four liquor stores and a half a dozen pot stores over in Federal Heights. You're putting these people at an unfair advantage. I mean, you're setting them up for failure with having these in a close proximity. So, I hope you take that into account. Next, will there be onsite security? And the reason I say that is because their sister project up on Federal at 97th, St. Mark's, is very crime-ridden. It's probably one of the worst police beats in our city. It's Beat 30. Ask any officer about Beat 30 and that particular development or that apartment complex without security. It's not good. It's not good for the people, it's not good for the city, it's not good for the city resources. So, we need to make sure that there's onsite security on this property to eliminate that problem. Next, on slide 25, you show a pool. Is that really something we need in this day and age? We're in a water problem, a water shortage. In fact, let's go back to their sister project up at 97th and Federal. They didn't get a pool. They didn't get a hot tub. I think they might have got splash pads, but the pool was eliminated out of that property. So, I think that needs to be evaluated. Here's the biggie. I know I've brought this before you, but this is under advice from counsel. And when I mean counsel, I mean legal counsel. There's a conflict of interest with the Uplands project, and Dave Carpenter sitting as a Board of Director on the Chamber of Commerce that Uplands is also a member of. I know we've said this, I know that last time, Mr. Graham said it wasn't a problem, but you need to look at the definition and how the court views a conflict of interest. Now, again, I'm bringing this forward under an advice of legal counsel for the protection of the State of the Farm group. There's a very easy remedy for this, Dave, and that would be for you to reclusive yourself from the vote. That would eliminate all concerns of a conflict of interest, even contrary to what Mr. Graham is going to say. Like I say, look at precedent set forth in the courts, up to and including the 17th Judicial District in which we sit. There is statutes. There is statutes and it is case law regarding conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next and last is Andre Raditis. And anyone else that would like to speak? If you haven't signed up, that's okay. Go ahead, just come on up to these front chairs and we'll get you next.
Thank you, Commissioners. And uh, this is my first time attending one of these commissions. And I'm at 86, 85 Clay Street. I am right at the northeast corner of Prospector's Point, apartment 303. So I will be looking over that construction. Uh, I have questions about how long the construction schedule is likely to go. Um, what kinds of restrictions the city of Westminster has on noise levels, on uh, construction periods during the day? Obviously, an eight-hour day is one thing. A 16-hour day is another thing. Working on the weekends is another thing. Uh, those are, those are all significant aspects to this. This is a 466 unit. Prospector's Point is uh, right next to that. So we're putting in 247 units there. I saw on the other plans that we've got uh, another seven building unit going in, uh, in, well, I don't know the exact numbers and everything. I'd have to look at that, but the, that could be another 247 units or some other number of units. But it looks like there's a great deal of development that's going on. And I don't know what is really being done other than the slight uh, change on Lowell Boulevard for uh, for increasing traffic, for increasing, it's not even increasing the lane sizes. It's uh, just further easements. That's the, that's with regard to the other development, I know. But I don't know what has been planned with regard to uh, you know, greater traffic management. We are putting a huge load of maybe a thousand more, maybe 2,000 more people, maybe 3,000. I'm probably underestimating in that area. And it would be interesting to know what the city of Westminster is going to do to manage the additional traffic in that particular area. Uh, it looks otherwise reasonably responsible, but I appreciate the other public comments and I would echo those. They all are, were, um, I'm, I'm grateful. I'm grateful for people to take this kind of an interest in the kind of development and um, that goes on. And as a homeowner, I'm a homeowner there. Uh, I'm very concerned about what comes on next to me. I believe in affordable housing, but it really does need to be done responsibly or it becomes a problem. And how do we do that? How do we balance that? Those questions really need to be considered carefully uh, as we build new developments. But thank you for your time.
Thank you and good comments.
That was the last of the speakers that have signed up.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Seeing no response, I'm going to close the public testimony portion of the hearing and uh, entertain questions from Commissioners. Commissioner Young.
Alrighty, I have a few questions. Um, it's usually traffic questions. So this is gonna get to our traffic guy, engineer. Um, to echo what the last um, person spoke about. And I, I know the city has referenced this before, but I guess I'll just ask it again. Um, for Lowell, how's the city going to address potential uptake in traffic? Um, and then, what is the city going to do on Federal um, and work with CDOT in addressing potential uptick in traffic with the development sites?
Good evening, Commission. Heath Klein, Assistant City Engineer and Transportation Engineer. So yeah, we have studied this parcel A, parcel B, C, and D. And yes, we do recognize that we are gonna be adding quite a bit of traffic to the area. We are widening the roadway of Lowell Boulevard, but not adding more lanes. We are gonna add bicycle lanes to each uh, northbound and southbound. They'll have a northbound through, a southbound through. We are improving the level of service at 84th Avenue in Lowell to add left turn pockets. So currently, that doesn't exist. We do have left turn pockets at 88th in Lowell. At 88th and Federal, yes, the northeast corner with the Eagles building, it is pretty far south. So what this development and the city has done is we're actually pushing 88th Avenue rights-of-way and roadway improvements further south so that it is almost a, an exact through street to, to cross Federal Boulevard. So we will be improving that. We are looking at uh, signal timing along both the Lowell corridor, which the city of Westminster controls, but working with CDOT as well for any improvements on signal timing along Federal Boulevard. There is also a plan right now with CDOT and the state of looking at improving the bus transit along that corridor as well to move more people and maybe pull some of the single occupant vehicles off of our roadway. But uh, there's capacity. I know currently, when we are on those roadways at our commutes, it can feel like we're at the, the max capacity. But through the traffic reports and the analysis, we can absorb this additional traffic and it's not gonna blow our roadways to, to the point that it's gridlock.
Thank you and thank you for always answering my questions about traffic. You're always the engine.
I have a question for you too. One of the commenters mentioned the turn lane in southbound Federal at 88th. I've used that many times and he's right. There's not enough room there for more than a couple of vehicles. Can that turn lane be extended north?
We are working with CDOT to, so the traffic report identifies some uh, what we would prefer the storage to be. And so we are working with CDOT to see if they will accept that and modify that. In the meantime, CDOT is also looking at uh, other median projects along the entire corridor of Federal, north of 92nd, all the way up to 105th Avenue. But uh, yes, we are working with them to see if we can increase that.
Okay, one thing I would mention is that you do have to work with the state. You can't just make arbitrary decisions on that roadway. Is that correct?
Absolutely not. Federal Boulevard is CDOT-controlled rights-of-way.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner calling.
Mr. Klein, I'm sorry, before you go, I have a few questions. I apologize. You tried to sit down really fast, didn't you?
Yes.
Um, so I, I see that 88th is not straight across, right? There's, it's, the Eagles is right there. So are you pushing the 88th Avenue that's on the west side of Federal South? Is that what you're saying? So that it lines and misses the Eagles? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. So uh, it almost will feel like there's a, an extra lane on the north side of 88th at the west um, side of Federal.
Got it.
And so yes, we are pushing, pushing the 88th rights-of-way further south on the west side to make, to basically align with a widened 88th Avenue on the east side.
Great. And that then is 88th between Federal and Lowell? Is that a collector?
It will be a collector for, for our purposes because it is collecting the rest of the neighborhood. It is not an arterial.
It's not a local. It's between, okay, so.
And it's not a local.
So what is the category of 88th east of Federal?
The same.
A collector also?
It, it's collecting. So we don't have homes fronting it and it's intended to collect the traffic from Prospector's Point and the new development to allow them to get up to 88th and utilize the signalled intersection.
And since there was two people that spoke about um, questions about 88th east to Zuni, I realize um, that's in a different jurisdiction um, because it gets into Federal Heights, I believe, once you go past this project. I think that next-
A bit. Uh, and the grades, as you've heard tonight, there is the extended basin, detention basin that was gonna be located kind of at the far northeast corner of the property in question. But there's other grade uh, challenges to continue 88th down to Zuni. That is part of the reason why it was never really done. Uh, we, we in fact looked at for our fire access. There, there's minimum or maximum slopes and we weren't able to get down to within the right realm for that as well as our own maintenance equipment as well. So that is the reason, one of the main reasons why we chose not to extend that roadway down to Zuni.
So it's not just because it's a different jurisdiction? You're looking at this as a region-wide holistic, okay?
Yes.
It's just not possible? Cause there's a park there too, it looks like, and there's some wetlands and-
That is correct. We are adding, as it has been mentioned, a 10-foot wide uh, concrete trail for bicycles and pedestrians. And we are looking at even an accessible route that would go from 88th kinda north into the Highland Hills Park property and connect to Combinash Park.
Is there um, any, any fire concerns with 88th not going through, in your opinion? Or safety for police and access by kind of this area kinda being kind of a dead-end area that you know of? I mean, I know you're a traffic, but-
Right. They are part of the review team and actively uh, voice their concerns and work with the development and planning as well as engineering to make sure that we are able to serve uh, for a fire. And they did not raise that, that there has to be a connection over there.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Uh, before you go, just, just the uh, sensor there. The, you said, you mentioned the 10-foot trail that's com, that is connecting there. That 10-foot trail is not gonna be ADA accessible then?
That's what, we're looking at two different ways. So one, cause we know that as a pedestrian that is able-bodied, they will take the shortest route. And so we are looking at uh, having an, like enabled-bodied route as well as an accessible route.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Dunn, did you have any questions?
I know, Ms. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Young.
Um, this might either go Nate or you, but whoever. Uh, it has to do with parking. Is the city concerned of potential overflow with parking at the site development?
There were 381 spaces that are required by code as our minimum and they're meeting that. Um, and as was mentioned, um, parking would be allowed on, on street, on Clay and 88th, I believe, Heath. Um, so-
Would those be free parking or meter parking?
Um, it would be free at this time.
Yeah, the Clay Street would be free parking and there'll be parking allowed on both sides of the street.
Okay. Um, and then um, Nate, this is for you. Um, I, I live pretty close to the site, not the site development, the, the other development that the, the applicant's working on. And I know one of the guests, uh, or one of the city folks referenced noise, concerned about noise. I haven't heard any issues with noises with the construction. Um, but maybe cause I'm a deep sleeper. But um, does the city, what's the city ordinance on, on noise in, in terms of construction? Is this a Heath question too? Oh, it's a yucky day.
In a way, not lucky. Currently, we do not have a noise ordinance. So we do uh, require contractors not to begin working before 7:00 AM nor work beyond 7:00 PM. And in sensitive areas, we actually do ask that they, you know, do not start until other times. But currently, there is not a code requirement for the noise.
Okay. Now, uh, so obviously there's no noise ordinance. However, and I'm not saying that the applicant and their construction team is going to maliciously do this, but if it does exceed a threshold where it is unbearable, how do residents address this with the city?
Uh, I, I guess they, they always have the option to call in and let us know. And I know on the civil construction side, if we do hear that, I, I've worked and we've heard, you know, when vehicles are starting a little too soon on the current site, we do remind the contractor and the developer to be a better neighbor. And so always, if you have a complaint, we have the Access Westminster Portal or we do have uh, you know, the main operator, city manager's office, planning and/or engineering if you wanted to uh, let us know what your complaint is and we will investigate.
Okay. And I, I don't think the applicant's gonna do this unless, I just had to ask. Um, I, I, thank you, Heath. Uh, this is for the applicant now. Um, so obviously you're still going through the process, having to deal with us and then eventually have to deal with the city council. Um, but if, if it is approved, um, what is the timeline for construction? Um, one of the residents have asked that.
So I think there's, there's a lot of development going on in just the Uplands area in general. To speak to this specific ODP, the horizontal and vertical for the actual project site, that 10 acres. And then there are some off-site infrastructure improvements as well, which are connected to this ODP, but which are being performed um, by the, the overall Uplands developer. Uh, the construction timeline for the overlook at Uplands product is 21 months. Uh, that's broken down into roughly uh, four months of site work, which is where you have a lot of your heavy equipment, um, that kind of thing. And then the, and that, that if everything goes to the current schedule, that would start sometime early summer. If um, if that gets late, obviously you push it out. The roadwork and all of that, Marcus may be able to answer better than I, but would be starting on a different timeline and, and last maybe five to six months.
That's terrific. Thank you for the question. That's one of the reasons we show that kinda overall infrastructure to show that process we went through for the master improvements, including that intersection at 88th and Federal. So as you know, grading is occurring on parcel A now. The utilities, the construction, all of that, Jordan's absolutely correct, would lead into this site development. So we believe that's about the right timeline. Um, but going through that, and again, I would just mention the one thing, and Mr. Klein could not be more thorough, but just also a reminder that at 86th and Federal, we are putting in a full movement light as well. And that changes a lot of this discussion of making 88th and 86th and connections through grid on a north-south basis. 86 going southbound left is terrifying, right? Um, and a very dangerous intersection. And making that function as well, we think is really important to unlocking this site as well.
I apologize. I misspoke earlier. Our construction times are 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Saturday. And we don't allow uh, Sunday work, construction and nor holidays. So I apologize to commission for misspeaking.
Nope, you're fine, Heath. Um, my last que, or I think it's my last question. Um, and I'm just relaying what uh, the residents brought up. Um, so one of the residents brought up concern about fires and ba, balconies and grilling. I, what's, um, I guess this is a question for the city, but it might be for you too. Oh, the architect, okay. Does the city have any like ordinance preventing people from grilling on the balcony or such forth? Oh, go for it.
The city actually does have an ordinance. Um, is adopted within the amendments to the fire code. But in fact, most jurisdictions around the Denver metro area have that.
Okay, so-
No. On the other hand, nobody follows it, but it is in fact a rule.
Okay. Enlighten me on this, this, about this.
It, it's a big concern and rightfully so. Um, we do not allow barbecue grills of any kind, electric or gas, on balconies. Um, that's very strictly enforced. And you'll notice on our site plan, we have three separate areas on site with barbecue grills, the north, middle, and the south, precisely because people like to barbecue and they will do what they need to to make it to a grill.
All right. So with that, um, for the applicants, I'm assuming you would be working with uh, the, the management team who's gonna monitor this place and to enforce that. And then I guess I have to enlighten some friends on city ordinance policies.
Yeah, that's great and thank you for that question. I'll just say, a number of the questions that came up are comments about crime and some of those issues of parking. I just wanna say and remind folks, this is a incredibly well-regulated, um, very experienced affordable housing developer with multiple Lytec communities. And something you can do in Lytec communities is you can enforce rules much more than you can- And something you can do in Lytec communities is you can enforce rules much more than you can in some other communities. So we embrace this discussion. We appreciate all the comments from our collaborators, our neighbors around us. We think they provided some great guidance. But I will tell you, I think we see this in a reminder, the 40% to 80% AMI is people making $45,000 to $85,000, firefighters, police officers, teachers. This is a terrific amenity for residential units for our community as well. And we certainly do not believe this is crime-ridden. I will lastly say, the most important thing is to actually provide street connectivity and lights and connections instead of an area that's kind of undeveloped and dark. We think that actually really helps this area and makes vital connections and actually really influences the neighborhood in a very positive way.
Commissioner Mayo?
Yeah, not to beat parking to death, but I have.
Sure.
One question. Are these garages counted in that parking number?
They are counted in the parking number, and in that ratio, it's a blend of parking, those tuck-under and surface parking. Yes, sir.
Okay, because, you know, going by my neighborhood, less than 50% of the garages would hold a vehicle.
Yeah, I think, you know, one thing I would say on that, again, back to the idea of how we can enforce it is, one, using permits and stickers, right? So we know who's parking there and who's not parking there, so we can understand and control our ratios, and also making people park in garages, right? And not store things in garages. We think that's really important. It's an important element to actually make sure it's not stored, so people aren't on the street. So we work hard to enforce that as well.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Commissioner calling?
Hi there. Enforce, you can enforce that? That people can't use their garage for storage?
Yeah, you can put that, we have it in a lot of our different communities now. That's an issue that we're starting to hear for sure, and we are putting that in HOA or in their leases. These are leases, they're rental agreements, and so we're able to go through and control some of those issues.
I did not know that, that's very interesting. And we did have a question about privacy fencing to the east, can you talk a little bit about that, please?
Sure, we actually don't see, as you can see on this site plan, and thank you for having this up, kind of the transition here, we don't have additional perimeter fences. We think it's important to have connections, and as you know, the PLD to the west of this and the connections to the north. I will just note, from the mobile home community to the east, we have a 35-foot landscape buffer and then a 100-foot building setback. So we think there's kind of a natural buffer that happens there from that community. I think that was the suggestion, but we're really trying to do that with kind of more of a green edge and landscaping and kind of knitting this back in.
Thank you. This is probably, let me see if I have anything else for you. I don't think this question's for you, I think it's for Nathan. Can you tell me what the schools are? Somebody was asking what schools, do you know what the elementary, middle, and high school are for this area? Someone was asking that. Not to put you on the spot or anything, sorry.
I can't, I just have a very small screen, so I'll have to look up sheets.
I can go ahead and ask Marcus, the garage outlets, somebody asked about garage outlets, are they going to be sized for electric cars?
Yeah, and I'm going to, and I'll certainly let the city correct me. In the overall Uplands PDP, all multifamily are required to have Level 2 chargers at over 5% of the units. So we will meet those sustainability features as well. That's something we actually are seeing evolutions of, sir, as my car is charging right now outside of the city stand, that we're seeing more of that. But that's the minimum requirement in the underlying PDP, and then we're looking at if there's other possibilities to add more to that.
So the city's requirement is at least 5%?
It's, I just want to be sure, it's in our PDP, it's Level 2 chargers and at least 5% of the units.
We should think about changing that.
Yeah, and they've actually provided, I think, closer to 11% of the overall parking, so they're exceeding the 5% requirement, as well as providing solar panels on the roof of the clubhouse.
Just on the clubhouse, not on the other buildings?
It's only required per the PDP for buildings over a certain size threshold, but they will have to provide cool roofs as well, so they'll have to paint theirs white or gray.
I just know that they've done, the roofs at St. Mark's, you guys had more solar panels on most of the buildings.
Yeah, our current intention is to actually utilize solar carports, so not on the actual buildings themselves, but on some of the covered parking spaces.
I don't see covered parking spaces on the site plan I'm looking at, which ones are those?
They're, they're making their way through the actual permitting process. They'll be located along the eastern edge of that crescent-shaped building. They have maximum exposure.
Great, thank you. And then one of the other questions that came up was, who develops the three-acre park, I believe?
Yes, great question, that was a nice question by the neighbor. It's dedicated to the city, so the public, or the city, excuse me, goes through the planning process and develops those parks.
Great, I don't have any more questions, thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Unless Nathan has an answer yet on the school.
Nathan, we're waiting.
So you're still looking, sorry.
Okay. Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I would like to address Mr. Palmer's assertion. Yes, I am on the board of the Westminster Chamber of Commerce. Yes, the Uplands is a member of the Chamber of Commerce. Yes, the city of Westminster is a member of the Chamber of Commerce, and so is Westminster Public Schools. So there's a lot of, lot of chamber members. I get no renumeration for being a chamber member. I have no financial interest in the Uplands project. I have never discussed the, any project that is up for discussion in, with others. I have left the room when the Uplands has been discussed by the board, and I am able to judge this fairly. Mr. Graham, did I hit all the, all the points, or is there anything else I need to say?
I base your decision solely on the evidence presented at the hearing?
I am basing my decision solely on the evidence presented at the hearing.
We're good.
Great, thank you. All right. Onto some of the other points, well, the close proximity of legal businesses, I don't know that it's important, but the safety, on the other hand, is, I think that is, is a question about management. I don't, I don't know about the assertions about St. Mark's being crime-ridden. I do know that Federal Heights has a reputation for that. Is there planning for extra security for this, this specific enclave? Or for, to help make, keep this a family-oriented, you know, safe place for people to live, work, and play?
We, we utilize onsite security, security patrols, and/or fully manned, you know, 24/7 on an as-needed basis at any of our communities, so that resource is available. We utilize it from time to time. I am not aware of any time when we have needed to use it for St. Mark Village.
Okay, got it, so, all right, so you're going to, you will have onsite security as needed to protect the residents?
The resources available, yep.
Great, okay, thank you for that. Let's see, there was a question on the ADA, those are all just the ground floor, correct? There is no, there are, there are no elevators planned for these three-story buildings?
That's correct, these are three-story walk-up with enclosed and secure breezeways.
Perfect, okay. Got it, uh, let's see, let me, just going through my list here. Yeah, those were, oh, the, the other thing about the buffer between the Mobile Home Park and the east boundary of our site, it looks like even though there's no fence proposed, that there's probably about 10-foot grade change along that entire fence or so between the parking lot, and, there, am I reading that correctly?
You are, it, it slopes off both to the east and to the northeast, fairly severely to the northeast. So there is a 35-foot landscape buffer. You'll notice in the site plan, the dark green trees, those are evergreen and/or pine trees that provide for year-round buffer, and the lighter green trees are deciduous.
So it's on the slope that's probably about like this or so?
Yes.
For that 35 feet?
Yes.
And the Mobile Home Park looks like it's already fenced, at least if I'm reading the document correctly, is that correct?
They are correct.
So that'll prevent any residents from your place going over to there, or make it at least more difficult?
Unless they want to walk all the way around, yes.
Fair, okay, great. See, those were, those are my big ones, just, I think everything else has been addressed. Great, thank you very much.
Commissioner calling?
Sorry, I have one more question. You said secure breezeways? So are there like locked doors that when residents going into their units, it's a locked outside door and you go into like a breezeway? That's internal?
There are, so, you know, a typical three-story walk-up apartment building that you'd see pretty much anywhere, you'll notice, you know, bright lights in the staircases, they're exposed, you'll see concrete steps going up and down. The way we construct our communities has an enclosed interior breezeway that has a secure access entry at the ground floor.
I've seen that, and I like that, that's very, I think it's very safe, I like that. In general, I just have to say that it's a great project. I'm all for affordable homes in, in our city, we need more of that. And I'm really glad to see this project coming forward. Good job on this, and the architecture's nice. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I will call for a motion on this application. Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move the Planning Commission recommends city council approve the official development plan for Uplands filing number three, Block 2 planned unit development. This recommendation is based on the finding that the official development plan is generally supported by the criteria set forth in Sections 11, 5, 15 of the Westminster Municipal Code.
Can I get a second? Commissioner Mayo?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, I am going to call the question, can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Zhang?
Yes.
Commissioner Zhang is in favor, Commissioner Mayo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayo is in favor. Acting Chair Carpenter?
Acting Vice Chair Carpenter, yes.
What did I say? Chair? Acting Vice Chair, excuse me. Chair Bosher?
Yes.
Chair Bosher is in favor. Commissioner calling?
Yes.
Commissioner calling is in favor. Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn is in favor. Commissioner Tomacek?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomacek is in favor.
Thank you, and the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Nathan, for your presentation, and the applicant as well. Nathan, did you ever figure out the schools?
I did, it's sorry, it's really complicated, and it's been, I don't know, six months since, since I had it, so thank you for testing me. There's actually two different school districts. So Building 7E, which is the one that was kind of like angled, would, is in Westminster Public Schools, Rocky Mountain Elementary, Thornton Middle, and North Glen High. The rest would be in Adams 12. So that would be Flynn Elementary, Shaw Heights Middle, and Westview High.
So the, the project has a dividing line down the middle? The project has a dividing line between two different school districts?
Yeah, it was complicated to deal with. So yeah, it just kind of, the like boundary sort of slices the site basically down.
That's very odd.
Both have adequate capacity for the students that are anticipated to be generated.
Very impressive, thank you for looking that up.
Thanks to dig around.
Good job. Is there any old business we need to address? Any miscellaneous business? Jennifer, do you know when the next meeting will be?
We do have a Planning Commission meeting scheduled for March the 12th, two items.
Very good, thank you. Since there is no further business to be attended to, I am adjourning this meeting.